Good evening. We apologize for starting late. I'll take responsibility for that. Good evening. This is the February 23 meeting. No, this is not the February 23 meeting.
Yes.
This is the 23rd.
It is.
Wednesday, the 23rd, 2022. The zoning board of appeals for the town of Hyde Park. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance if we can, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have minutes to approve from the last?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve minutes. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, let's begin. We have a new application. Twenty-two dash oh-two Z, Mr. Thompson.
Or Mr. Friedman.
And Mr. Friedman. Either one?
I'll take either one.
Okay, good. Welcome, sir.
And welcome. Hey, first live meeting since, whatever, two years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Very happy to be here.
We're happy to have you.
So I represent Mr. Thompson, the Thompson family, for this project at Three Pond Street. In 1983, Mr. Thompson applied for a two-story building permit for a garage addition to their home. And what you see here sooner or later is the result of that. Just to talk a little bit about the architecture of it, it's not, this is, the application's for legalizing accessory apartment. The accessory apartment has been existing since 1983. If, when I go there as an architect and I see what I see in the construction, if you go visit the site, the original drawings were for an accessory apartment. I don't know why. It's listed on the building permit as a two-story application with livable space on the second floor. Just was never legalized. So I'm here tonight representing the family. Mr. Thompson has since passed away since 1983. I have pictures of the site, but it's a second-floor accessory apartment, meets all your requirements of the town. The intent is just simply to legalize it. It is not visible from the street. Like I say, when I talk about architecture, I have photos if you want me to do that. The way it was designed, and it had to be designed just because the way it was constructed, the way roofs work out, you don't get a sense, it's on the left-hand side in that picture, that there is an accessory apartment there. It's a studio apartment. You will pick up a little bit of it here. The neighbors are screened, so to the left, there's actually a fence up to the neighbor. To the right, there's a fence up with the neighbor to the backyard. It does look out on Route 9, so when we have a treeless, a leafless winter, you can see it from Route 9. There is some sort of a drainage ditch, I think, which you see in your report, in the backyard, right adjacent to Route 9. It's flowing at the moment. It's not a stream. So I'm not sure what else you'd like to talk about.
Where is the pond for Pond Road? I looked for it.
No idea. I am assuming it might have existed back up where the apartments are now or further back in the woods.
So why is he trying to make it legal now?
He passed away, right? So Mr. Clayton Thompson, who's the father, passed away. So it's, his wife is still living in the home now.
Okay.
There is Michael Thompson, who I represent, as part of the trust. It's just simply, it's there. It's an accessory apartment. It has value, particularly within the town. It's a small studio apartment, so there's not a lot of rental opportunities for that size apartment. They'd like to legalize it. So at some point when they move forward, I am assuming the mother wants to finish her life in the house. It would be ideal if she needed help for someone to live in the studio apartment. And then when they move on?
So it's be owner-occupied?
Yes. And the house is owner-occupied now.
Is it considered, would it be a two-family or would it be a single-family house with an accessory apartment?
The application, I believe, is for, is an apartment within a single-family dwelling.
Yeah.
The building department will use criteria and it will probably have a CO that notes two-family.
Right. There's, there's no such thing within building codes, an accessory apartment, you're either one-family or two-family. This meets, and so this would live in the building code. This lives in the residential code, not in the commercial code, just the way it's an accessory apartment, the way it's set up. So.
And what were you saying before? You said it was originally set up to be a garage with, so I was just, I wasn't sure.
Someone, someone, someone had, there had to be drawings. I know, you know, within the town of Hyde Park, something that happened in 1983, it's kind of questionable within the building department at the time. I'd be nice about that. There are no drawings for this. There was a flood or something in 1990 that wiped out the entire building department records. But if someone takes a site visit, the way it was constructed, there had to be an architect involved. Just that roof that, you don't see it from the front of the street. The roof blends into the original garage roof that was there. The studio apartment itself, just the way the loads are brought down and everything, there had to be drawings. It wasn't like we had a garage and let's finish the second floor as an accessory apartment. This had to be figured out originally. So.
Is there garage under, I see where the loft is and that's the upper level. Is there a?
Garage under.
Okay, so there's a garage underneath it?
Yes.
So the second-floor apartment is above the garage?
Right.
Okay.
What is the, what has the apartment been used for so far?
Studio apartment.
Who's lived in it?
The son.
Okay.
So family.
Family, family's been in it for now. The neighborhood, the small Pond Street by itself is mostly single-family homes. I didn't really look around and see if I could pick up a studio apartment. There were lots of cars parked in one house. Farther up, there's condominiums, there's apartments. So it's not, you know, this is kind of, it's an older neighborhood.
How many square feet are we talking about in terms of the house and the apartment together?
I believe, I can go look at my notes exactly. It's greater than 500 square feet.
Twenty-two, eight-seven?
Yeah.
Five-seventy-six for the living area and then the other?
Right.
The rest of the house.
It's also reflected in the tax rolls. So again, you've been taxing it.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, forty-eight, okay.
Right.
The primary interest is in the back, right?
So right, so right now, and I am an honest architect here, right now, the primary interest is the back of an outside stair. So we do have to go put an interior stair in. You can't have outside access based on your zoning code. So as part of this, there will have to be a new stair constructed inside. But the father originally constructed the opening. So the origin, like I said, it's just, it's different. That had to have been planned out for that stair because where I showed the new stair going inside, it was already framed out. So.
So owner-occupied, they sell it, non-owner-occupied, is it still legal?
There, on the CO, there will be a note for the variance and the special use permit because this has to go through the planning board. And that will be on the CO as an accessory apartment approval.
Which means that they would have to be owner-occupied to use the accessory apartment?
That is what the requirements are.
Do you understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, the other issue is that the property is itself on a small piece of property. It's already, what, .39 acres?
Right.
And the requirement for two dwellings would be two acres in this case?
One acre.
One acre. One half acre.
One acre.
So we are.
So we're more than 100%.
Right. So we are asking a variance for that also.
One more question. Are there any notes on the original subdivision plat to suggest that it could only be single-family homes?
This, this, as far as I know, this predates, a filed map is not referenced on here. So it probably, the lots probably predate the requirement for approval through the planning board.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay.
Anybody?
Okay. I think what we'd like to do then is set a public hearing for next month?
It'll be March 23rd, yes.
March 23rd. I'll need a motion to set the public hearing for.
Motion.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? All right. Good, Jim. We'll set the, thank you, sir. Okay. Next item is the continuation of the public hearing for Camp Victory Lake. We don't have a representative here. Do we? Okay. We have. Are we con, just continuing that?
We cannot act on this application until the planning board concludes their seeker review.
Okay. And do we have, have we received any additional information at this point?
Yes. The applicant submitted, I'm not positive of the date. They submitted some drawings, which I emailed to everybody. This, which is, I believe, mostly for rich, demonstrating the differences in the building layout based on the fire department comments.
Right.
And then they also have moved their, that's the wrong one, sorry. They've moved their cabins to a different area, which means they no longer need the variance for the cabins. They still need the variance for grading.
Still need the zero variance for the road?
Correct.
Okay. So we have, okay.
So we can make that more specific.
Yeah. Well, it's still the same. It's still, the variance is for zero feet.
But yes, we can specify that it's just for grading and construction, yes.
Okay. Any questions or thoughts from anybody?
The environmental assessment, are they going to review that at the planning board meeting? Do you know?
They are waiting to finalize the seeker until DPW replies about the entrance.
Okay.
Because I saw some things that I thought were incomplete.
They look at it pretty closely. I'm sure they're welcome to take comments.
I think I might have additional information, which I haven't sent to you yet, but there's a 100-page document about seeker. So if you'd like me to send that, I can.
And what, what's that regarding, Serena?
I only briefly glanced at it, but it was going over like everything to do with possible environmental impacts.
Okay. Is it, is it a new document?
I received it, I believe it was earlier this month, or it might have been last month I received it, yes.
Okay. All right. Is it something that we need to consider for the variance?
It was submitted to the planning board and the planning board secretary sent it to me as a courtesy.
Okay.
So it was not directly submitted to us, but if you would like to review it, I can send it to you.
Okay. Yeah. Do you have electronic?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, let's do that. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, then we would, I need a motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion to continue the public hearing.
What month would you like that?
We're anticipating what the planning board will have our information back.
At least April or later. Ted, is that correct?
I had thought May, but.
May.
So do we want to say May or April and then we can continue it if they've got?
Do April and then continue.
Let's do, let's set it for the.
It would be April 27.
April 27. A motion for April 27, continuation of the public meeting, public hearing. Motion?
And motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving along.
Moving along.
Rite Aid. I can't get you up here yet. All right. Rite Aid, we, as failed, okay. This is an application to Rite Aid Pharmacy for a change in the signage at One Crumb Elbow Road. The applicant, we have, we have sent correspondence to the applicant indicating that the application is not complete and we've asked them to add additional information. And as a result of that, I think we need to continue, they're in, they're in public hearing right now, correct?
Correct.
So we need to continue the public hearing for March?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Rite Aid till March?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Key construction? Oh, welcome.
This is done.
Okay.
Good evening.
Would you prefer to, to control this?
I have nothing new to present, so I just didn't know. I know this is a public hearing tonight, but it was really a continuation of the last public hearing, but I didn't have anything to present. I just assumed that we were going to go over the existing information that we had provided.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, though, for asking. I would have brought, I always do a PowerPoint, but I would have brought it. Do you have?
This is new.
Yes, I like it. Very excited. So we can send you the documents before and then you can put them up on the screens?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's very, then we don't have to bring boards.
Right.
So much easier.
Yeah, or you could even bring your own laptop. It's just connected through an HDMI cord.
Perfect. Okay. So I'm, I'm Kelly Leibert with KRC Planning, representing the applicant tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening. We did present this project to you before. We're here tonight to seek an area variance for scale for this existing site. We have provided you with all of the information regarding the scale. We did present this project to you and there was a public hearing that was scheduled, but there was a minor error in the calculation on the scale. So that's why we're here now, two months later, for the public hearing. The original scale was approximately 64,000 and we left out a small area underneath of a building, so it's actually 66,914. So we properly published the public hearing a month and a half ago. And so we're here tonight to answer any questions that you have. Yes, sir.
I just have one comment. During this snow thaw and melt, a prominent problem that occurs just north of the edge of your driveway rears its dirty head.
Okay.
And it's water.
Okay.
I think that the Department of Transportation, New York, should correct that problem. But you, but you could help lessen it by about 1/30 your driveway that will be.
It's going to be.
Runoff. That'll be, the first 30 of your driveway?
Yes.
The runoff goes right to the road.
Can I, am I allowed to go up and point on that screen?
Sure.
Okay.
There should be a handheld microphone.
There are portable ones.
Okay. So the existing driveway actually extends over onto the adjoining property line right here. That's that dash line?
It's two, separate in the center.
Yes. But the existing driveway extends over the neighbor's property. So all of this area here will be graded and topsoiled and seeded and grassed. And so then there'll be an appropriate squail, swale. And then a new apron will be constructed. So I'm hoping that that fixes it. Are you saying it's up here?
Well, no, it, yeah, it's up, it's up there. But you see where, where the turn is, where you turn into their driveway?
Come in, come in, come into the property.
Oh, here!
From there out, the water that was piled, or the snow that was piled up was melting and coming out and adding to the.
Oh, I see.
So I didn't know if there was a way that you guys might be able to capture that or?
Okay. So if I understand it correctly, the snow is running this way?
The water will.
Okay. So I'm wondering if.
Downpours, you know.
If the slope, yeah, if the slope of that road at that point is toward 9G, that will cause.
I just know that you guys have a lot of wetlands and maybe if you could somehow just roll off the edge towards the, in the right direction.
Well, the other thing that we can do is this road could be crowned so that when we have melt, it's off to the, both of the sides. So it's not going into the road. But okay, that's a planning board issue, but I'm going to make that note so that when we're before the planning board, we can address that.
You can help the problem.
We can minimize it, yes.
But New York Department of Transportation needs to fix it.
I'm not sure that I can accomplish that, but I can at least try to fix that. Yeah.
I used to, but they all retired.
They all retired. Chuck used to be up there and he was awesome. Not that Joe isn't, that guy's a great guy.
But that application, I think, would help.
Excuse me?
Yeah. Just crown that road.
Yeah. And then grade it off to the side.
Great observation, Rich.
Okay.
That's cool.
Okay. All right. We're still waiting for the planning board.
No, we are good to go. If you would like to close the public hearing and vote on this, our attorney has prepared a resolution, which should be at the back of your folders.
Okay.
I'll read that if you want.
Are there any other, there's any other public, you're not.
She's with me.
You're with her. Okay, all right.
I do have one.
There being no other.
I have received no comments about it either.
No other comments. Okay, all right.
You have something else to say?
I just have one comment. The, we did review the draft resolution and this is a question for the attorney. So the applicant is listed as Key Construction, but on the application, it says Jasa Properties LLC. And I just didn't know if they need to be consistent or if they say Key Construction and Jasa, just so that the variance application is granted to the property owner. So it's, the property is owned by Jasa Properties. It's J-A-S-A-L-L-C.
Yes, I saw that as the property ownership, but not as the applicant. But yes, we can add that as, do you want both? Is the intention?
As long as it's understood that the variance runs with the land, not with key, with the applicant.
Oh, got it.
Yep, that was my concern.
Understood.
All right. So do we need to add anything to the, and the first paragraph?
I think we'll do Key Construction and Jasa LLC as the owner.
Yep, perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Jasa.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I read?
Well, not, not yet, not yet, not yet.
We do need to close the public hearing first.
Yeah, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Therefore, we have a resolution for this. Are you, you're, you're ready to read it?
I'm prepared.
Okay. Mr. Perkins, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution to grant an area variance for Key Construction LLC at 1234, very nice, Route 9G, Hyde Park, New York, 12538, tax parcel 616504524481. On February 23rd, 2022, resolution 21-21Z. Whereas the applicant, Key Construction and Jasa LLC, has submitted an application for an area variance to increase the maximum permissible building scale, square footage to construct commercial buildings, the project, at property located at 1234 Route 9G, Hyde Park, New York, 12538, identified as tax parcel 6165-04-524481, in the East Park Business District. Whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled Site Plan prepared by LRC Group dated June 1st, 2021, and revised December 21st, 2021. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeal makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The subject parcel covers 17.2 acres in the East Park Business District and the proposed development will be visually concealed from the roadway and screened from adjacent properties by extensive vegetation, including both evergreen and deciduous trees. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method other than feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. The proposed area variance will allow the applicant to develop a significantly larger portion of the sizable parcel. Moreover, the proposed development complies with the remaining bulk requirements and is outside of the wetland buffer. The alternative is to subdivide the property into two parts, in multiple parcels, and locate the building separately across each parcel. This is both financially inconceivable, I guess, it's conceivable, for the applicant and also environmentally detrimental, agreed, as it would likely increase the area of disturbance. Requested variance is numerically substantial. The applicant seeks to increase the building scale to 66941 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is the maximum permitted. If granted, the additional 26941 square feet represents a 67% increase. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. While the proposed project will result in a significant amount of ground disturbance to develop several commercial structures, this type of development will not negatively impact East Park Business District. Further, the development will not extend into the wetland buffer and the extensive vegetation on the 17.2-acre parcel will screen the development from the roadway and adjacent properties. Lastly, the planning board determined that the proposed project would not cause any significant adverse environmental impacts. Number five, the difficulties are self-created as the property owner, Jasa Properties LLC, has owned the parcel since 2012 and now seeks to develop the site in conjunction with the applicant. It is further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a request of variance subject to the following conditions: payment of all fees and escrow.
All right. We have a resolution for Key Construction, resolution 21-21Z. Is there a second?
Second.
Secretary, would you take the role, please?
James Agarwal?
Yes.
Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly?
Yes.
Richard Perkins?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to your, to your project.
Appreciate it.
We look forward to that, the progress on that.
Yes, thank you. It's a pleasure working with this board. It really is. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
I have, before we, before we adjourn, Ms. Moss, I have a question on the applicant that is proposed for a apartment. Yeah. The first one, Mr. Thompson, yeah.
We're still on the record and the chairman has a question to ask me about an application that's, was first on the agenda. Is that?
That's correct. This mirrors the previous application that we considered for the same principle of having a, an additional apartment on a plot of land that is considerably smaller than what the current requirement is in terms of a half acre per occupant. I'm trying to understand if, if this request for a variance has significant difference from what we considered before.
I would say yes.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's.
It's owner-occupied.
I believe that the board looks at the specifics of each application.
Right.
And although they may be similar, there are different circumstances surrounding each property.
Okay. If, if.
This was a question I asked. The, Mr. Neshewa, had this in the property subdivision on the map, there shall be only one principal dwelling on each.
Right. And we don't know that that's true in this case. We don't know if it's true or not. We haven't seen anything.
There is not a plat to look at.
Okay. Okay. Okay, all right. Are there any other issues? I have one announcement and that is at the next meeting, I'd like to have, we have some education, a half an hour before, yes. A half an hour before. And this is really, we have been looking at a lot of the stream and corridor issues in terms of the 100-foot, obviously with the one that we're currently looking at. And I think it would be useful, it would be useful for me and I think for everybody, to get some better understanding of. of why the 100-foot corridor is there, what are the options for that, and what we should be looking at as we look at future applications. And considering the climate change and the impact it's gonna have on us here, I think it would be good to have... So I've asked the climate-sensitive community committee to make a presentation to us for about 25 minutes before the meeting next time. And we'll go over the watershed concept, some of the culprit issues, and look at... We can also look at some of the impact that we're seeing in climate change here. And I think we need to have that information as we start to consider down the road. Okay? So...
Just to clarify, it's a presentation and a meeting? Is it open to the public?
There's no reason why it cannot be open to the public.
I would suggest that it be open to the public.
Right, so we would start it at 5:30 instead of 6:00.
That would be fine, as long as it's advertised and noticed that way.
Right.
So if it has to be advertised and noticed, and there is no applicant, then the town has to pay for that advertising? Just so you're aware. Costs money to put that advertisement.
Where do we advertise?
Well, you're going to have an agenda notice.
But we have the agenda already.
You're going to have a public meeting notice, correct?
And the schedule, I believe, establishes that 6 o'clock is the starting time? No?
It does. I send that out to the newspapers at the beginning of the year.
So if you change one meeting...
Could we change just one meeting?
Or you could tack it on the end.
Tack it on the end?
Or you could start at 6 o'clock, if there are no new public hearings to open.
Well, you can start at 6 o'clock anyway and have a presentation. You create the agenda, so you can organize whether a presentation would go first.
I can set the agenda so that the applicants don't start until 6:30.
Correct. Okay. All right, let's do that. That's fine. I'll communicate with them on that. Okay.
Great idea.
Is there any other... Good evening.
I am so sorry. I thought when you started, it said it.
Are you... Are you here representing?
Yes, I'm here for writing.
Well, you're just in time. You haven't adjourned yet.
Thank you. I am so sorry.
Oh, we did close the public hearing.
Close up?
Not closed, but we continued it.
We continue.
I think you can just move to...
Open the meeting.
Just re... Yeah.
All right, so we need a motion to reopen the public meeting on the public hearing on Rite Aid. Is there a motion?
Motion to...
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Okay. Was rushing so much, I left my glasses in the car there. That's all right. I know we've been...
Yeah, let me... Let me give you an update, because we have looked at the application, and also, I think the... With the board... County Planning has also looked at the application. And I think both of us feel that it is not complete at this point, in terms of what we had asked for. We have, for clarification, we are asking to submit a new variance request list, and you'll get... I'll give you a copy of this table format or otherwise. The existing table that we have been working from is missing an entire variance. Furthermore, the county planning believes that there are some computation errors in the total square footage calculations. This list table needs to include each sign number and location, the section of code from which you're requesting variance, what the code requires, and the dimension that you're requesting. And we'd ask you also to submit a new brand book, I think that's what it's called, with only correct information and relevant signs. Currently, we have three or four separate documents that we're working for and referencing, and we need to have it all in one submission. Bottom line, we're confused. We're still confused by the application, and we don't, in terms of the different sizes, what you're requesting, the variance, et cetera. And we've been going back and forth to try and understand that. And in fairness to the board, to be able to give you a request to approve a variance, we need to have this in a solid basis. So we don't think we can move further until we get that, and...
So the one that you have in front of you, you're saying is incorrect?
Yes.
I mean, I reviewed it. The only thing that I came up with is on their brand book, their existing signage, they never changed that, and they always do their square footage by the lettering only.
Right.
So when they changed it for what they wanted, which the ones I have are correct, they never changed that. So they're actually larger than what you're seeing on paper, the existing ones, because they weren't boxed out. Other than that, everything looked right.
We've also received from the county, the Department of Planning and Development for the county, and I'm just quote, just here, "The materials we received include numerous and confusing iterations of signed variance details. In seeking clarification from the town, we understand that there is not a full and complete accounting of the current version of requested variances. In the absence of clear information, we are unable to render a recommendation at this time." So they're not able to move yet until they get that, and we need that as well. And we have not... We need to send this... We'll share this with you.
I know Ted and I went...
I know. We haven't...
How many times have we...
We haven't gone over the new ones. You know, I have not looked at the new ones. I looked at the initial ones. I have not...
Oh, then that's where it is, then, because I did have them redo all the drawings, and I did send them. So if they hadn't been reviewed yet...
Right.
So we have two...
We've been negotiating with the board as to...
So we have two things we need to do. We need to... I think you need to put this together in a package, and then make sure we can get it to the county and for us to consider. So I think what we would do is continue the public hearing until... If you feel confident that you can have that together for us...
I would have to maybe see what you have, those latest ones that were sent, you said hadn't been reviewed yet? Because you and... I know we went through them. They were incorrect. I got new ones.
The first one that came in, the very first application, had been reviewed.
Right, I know that.
After that, it was been back and forth with the board as to change this, change that, and...
I was requested to have them all changed, which I did, and that was sent in at least two months ago or better.
No, but then I think there's another thing in the last one. Proportionally, something wasn't... Wasn't right.
I'm not sure.
I don't know. I don't know.
So maybe you could send the last one again.
Right.
And then...
And make sure that it's...
To who? To you to look at, or...
Because some of... I think what happened was some of the signage, like the directional signs, were remaining from the second edit. And the final changes related to the 24-inch letters, or whatever it was, on the building, and it didn't address the things that...
I was only asked to send the new drawings for the building, yeah.
Right.
I was asked to send them in 24-inch and 30-inch scale, which I did.
And we need to have all of the signage on the final, this is what we're doing.
Okay, so this, which looks correct to me, you're saying is not.
I believe Serena looked at it, and there's one whole variance that didn't get put on that schedule, that was on the original review. Is that right, Serena?
I'm a little confused, but I think yes. I believe it was for the letter size on the freestanding signs.
No, those are all under. I don't even know where to start, like what I'm supposed to do, because I...
Okay.
All the requests given to me, I sent in...
We'll share with you tonight, the one, the copy, and our thoughts in terms of it, and also a letter from the county, and that, I think, may help you in terms of what you're trying to do. It's... What are you asking for? What's the variance in terms of the code? And what is...
Yeah, that's...
What's the amount of change that we have?
That's what I have here, and I don't think there's one missing.
And the total square footage, I think, is also a concern.
These are right, the one for the agenda tonight.
Okay.
That I reviewed are correct, so I don't...
So you feel those are correct, so you're submitting those?
Those were... All have been submitted.
So we need to get those, then. If you feel those are complete, we need to get those to the county so that they can complete their...
So I guess, and maybe our attorney can correct me if I'm out of bounds, but I, if I remember correctly, some of these changes kind of happened just orally, like during the meeting. I believe Grace just mentioned, oh, we don't need this anymore. This is changing. And there has not been an actual new application, not entire new application, but a new list, a new explanation demonstrating what each sign needs. And the chart that I made, the table that I provided...
That's this, you mean?
And... No.
Okay.
It's yellow, and you filled in by hand some of the pieces.
Yes, yes, and I sent...
That's missing some variances, because there are so many of them, and I just missed them. So that is an incorrect document.
But you were trying to do that to clarify it.
Correct.
And that's really, we look to you to have that.
Right, right, and I had sent in the drawings that I was asked to. I don't think there are any other signs other than these. These are all the signs that they've asked for, that are on your agenda.
Let me recommend the chart, yes. I would encourage you to have on each variance, here's the signs as they are, here's what you're proposing, here's that, and then a summary on the chart.
They were submitted.
So we can look at all of this, because it has been very confusing for us to understand which variance where, how much, et cetera.
All of the ones they provided show the existing with all its measurements, and then underneath what they're asking for with all its measurements.
So I guess, given what you're saying...
I'm confused.
The work has been done, and you have it. I think it's just that there needs to be clarification on this side, that with this number of variances, the section of the code being cited, the actual computational and mathematical changes that you're requesting, that is up to the applicant to provide that information. I think that Serena and Ted have attempted to help navigate through it, but at this point, we need clarification from you. So if all that information is available, then hopefully you can just put it in a table with each variance, what it is, what you want, what the difference is, and what's requested. Otherwise, we're gonna keep getting a kickback from Dutchess County Planning, too. So I just, one full, revised with everything, because it's...
So I just need to basically copy this, because...
I mean, they're telling you that that's not...
They're all here with their codes and everything.
Put it in the easier-to-understand format, that's all.
And submit it with all of the changes that have occurred. Because when we reviewed it, it has been a substantial number of back and forths, both at the meeting and in writing. So I think just clarifying exactly where it is that you're at right now, and with all that information, will make it real easy to review and then get it through.
Okay.
And Nancy, as long as the variances are getting smaller along the way, the board can grant a lesser variance than the initial, so I shouldn't have to review it again.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Nancy, one question. It's the central idea, maybe I'm just stupid, which is possible, as more of a corporate rebranding look from Rite Aid, or is this, is the intent more visibility when you pull in?
No, we have already done numerous ones around the tri-state area. It is corporate.
It's a rebranding.
Rebranding.
It's not to improve visibility.
No, no, it's all corporate rebranding.
So I know when I go to Rite Aid every now and then, whether it's the drive-through or walk-in, I have no problem seeing what's there in the signage. I think from a visibility is fine, but you answered the question, it's more of a new look.
Yeah, it's, you know, Rite Aid Pharmacy, same thing, different colors, different logo, that's it.
Okay.
And when the company that does all of their work, it does all of Rite Aids all over the country, do it, they go by what is there. And oftentimes, they don't say, well, I wonder if they changed ordinance. They have the schematics of everything that's on the building, and they won't go according to that. So they did that in the beginning, and then we changed it. And then I was asked to provide both, because before, it was like 48-inch logo or something. So we changed it once, submitted it, and then we changed it again. And then it was asked to send in drawings for the 30-inch logo that they wanted and a 24-inch set of drawings, which I did. And that was, you know, what they were looking for. So they've come down from what they originally have in many locations. And as I said, what's up there now, what you were seeing on, that's the only thing I found on this that was incorrect. When they do it, many cities, towns, villages, or whatever, if you're using channel letters, they don't count the space in between the two lines. And here, you box it all out. So on the drawings that I submitted, on the top is what's existing, and they scaled that square footage as like just the letters, and that's why it reads like 32 square feet, when in reality, if you do it your way, it's like 51 square feet. So the difference in what we're looking for is not really tremendous. But I honestly don't know what to say, because everything that was requested from me, I sent in. This has been months now. You know, I pretty much told them, they had everything they need. I haven't heard anything in the last month from my last submission. I thought we were good to go. So, you know, I'm gonna have some explaining to do, but I'm not gonna take it all on me, because I provided what I was asked for, Hyde, and obviously...
We'll get to her. I don't know if we have a copy tonight.
I do, yes.
Give her those. Let me give you a copy of the two letters, which may be helpful for you.
I have it.
We appreciate your understanding. I think it's, we want to make sure in our head that we understand all the variances here to grant.
Because it is law.
Yeah.
No, I know it is, but we've been working on it, what, six months?
We still know where Rite Aid is.
Yeah, that doesn't matter. It's corporate.
In fact...
They may end up having me just pull signs down, because they're way beyond at this point. Like every month, I call them, and I go, yeah, we gotta go back again, and now they want this drawing, and now we want... And, you know, I pretty much told them that we should be wrapping it up tonight. So if they want, we'll just pull down what's there if they have to wait another month. Do you feel that if I get this in relatively quickly?
Yes, please.
That next month, one way or the other? I don't even care, you know, on some of the stuff I don't expect to get, just want it done.
Yeah, we understand. We appreciate your...
Do our best.
We appreciate your effort.
All right.
Thank you. Good night. Is there a motion now to close the... We need to close the public hearing.
I think we need to continue it again.
All right.
To March 23rd.
Motion to continue the hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any other business? Madam Secretary, is there any other business we need?
I don't believe so. We did it at the beginning.
Okay.
So we just need to... A motion to adjourn.
Our counsel, is there anything else that we need to discuss?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Ms. Moss?
If you want to go over the full environmental assessment form, I'd be happy to do that. You're welcome to stay, Rich. I guess we don't.
I think we're not gonna do that.
I guess maybe I'll contact the planning board and see if they want me to come visit.
I'm sure they would be happy to see you, Mr. Perkins.
So we still need to adjourn.
I need a motion for adjournment, then?
Double motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll sit there.
Okay.